Events as well as Chief Carter and Officer Brownlow, as well as Dakota. I think all three of you were there as well to the WellMed event. And it was nice to see them celebrating their one year anniversary with such an important, you know, clinic, as well as the charitable foundation, which runs their senior activity center as part of our community.
So. One more update, sorry. It wasn't in the report. We have been, staff actually, the city secretary and a few other staff met with Verizon today. Verizon is our phone provider. It's VoIP, so it's voice over internet. So, you know, we don't have landline. The phone, phone systems now are all on the internet. We have been having some issues with Verizon. And specifically, if, if the user is a T-Mobile user, some carrier, sometimes there's issues with the call getting disconnected. So, we have told Verizon this is a critical issue. We need, we need, you know, anyone with any carrier to be able to contact the city. So, they are working on, on addressing that. And, you know, if we continue to have problems, we may have to find another VoIP provider. So, just, just letting you know, we're working on that issue. So.
Councilor Rosengard.
First off, regarding your Verizon thing, the time when you really get super customer service is when you go with Google, like we did in the Meadows, finally got Google. All of a sudden Spectrum is hitting us every chance they can to try and get us back. Anyway, the bricks and figs store, are they having a grand opening?
They, they did on Saturday.
They did?
Yeah, they did.
We didn't do a ribbon cutting, a city ribbon cutting or anything?
We did.
We did?
Yeah. And yeah, and I contacted one out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, the mayor, the mayor cut the ribbon, right?
No, I, they cut the ribbon.
Oh, they cut the ribbon.
I was holding the ribbon.
You were holding it.
Okay, you were there.
We loaned them the scissors, right? Uh, yeah.
They were not Lego scissors either. They were, they were city, city provided scissors. I was expecting Lego scissors, but, um, yeah, there was, it was a really good turnout. It seemed that there were about, I would say, 200 people, 250 people waiting in line.
Wow.
And to get into the store. Cruz-Teca also provided food and they seem to have, you know, brought in some customers as well. So, I think it was a, a good event for that area, so. Any other questions? Right, I've got other questions for the city administrator. We'll move on to public works.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, we'll start off with just thanking everybody who came out for Arbor Day. We had a really good turnout here. We had some presentations and we're working on getting those up and some videos up on the internet for people who may have missed it. We also have, Matt's going to pull up a picture, some of the street signs are going in. I don't know if you've seen them yet. They're kind of going in in random places. So, if you didn't drive down Jones Road all the way to Ernest Robles Way, you probably didn't see it. So, they are going in as we speak. So, that was the one randomly, the one that's at Lovegrass and Yellow Tail. That one's in right now. So, those are going in. They'll have plates on the, at the base too, but they are, that is happening. Well, I'll also talk a little bit about Savannah Trail. So, the Savannah Trail is under construction right now. We've done the first section of concrete. Of course, we were supposed to probably pour concrete today, but due to the rain, that had to be delayed. So, we'll keep working on that. We are working on, we came up with a plan to, the boardwalk was a very expensive part of the plan. We've come up with a way to basically build a kind of more of an elevated style sidewalk with some structural soil underneath that will reduce damage and compaction to the trees, but also save a lot of money through the construction process. We're waiting those final numbers. We don't have that to determine what the cost saving is, but we think that will hopefully be a significant save on that project there. City Hall backyard, we're going to be starting on the fence. It's going to be sent to TCEQ for review for the exception request, but anything that was already existing, we're going to go ahead and start working on. So, the community garden fence and the area that leads over to the community garden, those are existing things that kind of falls under maintenance. So, we will be going ahead and moving those items forward. We had one of our sta, two of our staff pass their water exam. So, now we have, one of them moved up to a C license and the other has a new D license for water. So, that's very, very good to have some more people trained on that. And if there's any other questions for any of the other items in the report, I'd be happy to answer those.
Questions for the public works report? Start with Councilor Rosengard.
Probably the one I have is where you're replacing the boardwalk with a cement walk and cement supports. What are you talking about? Support walls? What are you talking about?
Yeah, so it's basically going to be kind of like a, like air and water and stuff to be able to get in there. It's used quite frequently in tree pits and stuff and in that situation to, under sidewalks, so that trees have room to grow and not, you know, damage the sidewalk, but also not damage to the trees. So, that's kind of what we're looking at there. We're working with the contractor and the engineers on making sure that will all work without damaging the trees in that area.
Thank you.
Councilor Johnson.
I don't think we've had a meeting since this happened, but I want to thank you guys for replacing all the boards on the bridge over at the Meadows.
Yes, no, thank you.
Like my, my, my personal kind of like, whatever, mission is, was to get that done. So, it looks great. So, thank you so much.
Good, thank you.
Councilor Metcalfe.
I also want to thank the Public Works Department and crew for the storage containers that have been set up on the triangle for SFC and the Arts Commission storage. So, that's working out really well. Thank you.
Yeah, it hasn't been a while since we've had a meeting. I think a lot, a lot has happened since then. Did we have the Daisy Dash since then as well, since our last meeting?
Yeah.
And thank, thank you to the, the police department for their support as well as public works for going out and doing some tagging along with Councilor Johnson, I understand, of the tree roots in that, that area for the trail. I think that was a, a great thing to have for visibility. And I'm also just going to want to express, you know, it's, it's really nice to see the work finally happening at Upper Cougar Creek and Savannah, you know, this Savannah Trail. I'm excited, you know, to be able to see the, the progress in the final product and I, yeah, just, just having access to that and being in proximity to the commercial areas, I think it'll continue that vision that we set a few years back now. And Councilor Reese was a big advocate for as well. Councilor Rosengard?
Oh, I forgot to mention, somebody was playing, God, now I can't even think of it. What's that new game everybody wants? Pickleball. And they were playing over at the DM area and it was no big deal. The noise wasn't that loud at all.
Yeah, the, the berm and stuff works as a great sound, doesn't it?
So, I was so happy that someone was playing and using it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for public works? Moving on to public safety.
Good evening. I'll, I'll start with the, some of the purchases that we've made on our motor vehicle grant that the state awarded us. One of the items that we purchased was cameras for the shopping center. I can report that by Friday, they should all be installed in front of various entrances to the shopping center. It was about $23,000 or $24,000 worth of cameras that were paid for with the grant and will help us with security, especially with like hit and runs and things that occur in the shopping center. We continue to work on two issues that the Public Safety Committee brought up to us. One of them is the parking issues in the villas and some of the code violations. We are kind of gradually making progress on that. I have promised them that by our next meeting, I will get that parking problem in the villas resolved and I think we'll get that taken care of prior to the next meeting. The other issue is the school zone traffic. We've, we've had two meetings with the School District Police Department. We thought we could get Safe Routes. It's a company that helps plot out better and safer routes for school, schools. We ran into a snag because they only do Austin and we're not in Austin. So, that said, we met with them again this week and we think we can make some tweaks to where the buses pick up the kids, so we can at least get the traffic pushed past the Montessori school, which will kind of, will make it safer. And we've also found some shrubs and things that can be cut back to help with visibility for the people at the Montessori school. So, it's moving slow, but we will get that resolved as well. We are making baby steps on it.
Councilor Johnson.
Oh, I do have a little bit more. The, uh, the last year, we awarded a life-saving award to two officers here at the council meeting. One of them was for a 20-year-old young man that was involved in a single accident over on 290. He was, he has had to go to treatment in several states, but last week, he actually came to the police department. He was able to stand up. There's a picture of him here. He's 21 years old now. He's able to talk. And it was a fatal act. And his parents, they've kept in touch with us the whole time and they just wanted to bring him there and officer. So, it was kind of a heartwarming thing and they're fans of this city and our department forever as a result of this. And some, most of the time, these things don't turn out good, so it's nice to see this young man's recovering.
Yes, and thanks again to those officers for their, for their quick reactions and saving his life. Councilor Johnson?
I, I just want to mention though, the drones that the city purchased have paid for themselves. I see them being used in so many different creative ways with Jones Road issues and with kind of planning for the school and stuff. I feel like the PD has been taking a lot of photos to kind of have a dynamic view of like what is happening at pickup, but then also allows us to, allows them to kind of plan for ways to change it. And then I had called Officer Brownlow a few days ago because my wife saw like a column of smoke rising and as soon as I said, hey, there's a, there's a column of, he's like, fire? I'm like, yeah. He goes, it's over near the, the target. And he immediately sent me a picture from the, the drone was like flying at the time. He just like, he saw it. He pulled it up, took a photo. I, I just, every time we have some piece of business or something that we need to work out, there's always like a drone photo that goes along with it and it is awesome. So, I don't know if any of the other committees are interested in using those, but budget and finance, just, yeah. But, but yeah, I just, I'm glad they're getting used and it's, yeah, you guys are making good use of them.
Any other questions for public safety? Right, thank you, staff. We're going to move on to item number seven, which is council consideration of agenda items for approval on consent. Councilor Rosengard?
I move to approve on consent. Agenda item number eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14.
Right, so the motion is approve on consent, item eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14. Does anybody want to pull one of those items for discussion?
Second?
A second to approve on consent, items number eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14. All those in favor of approving on consent, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, we approved on consent. Well, yeah, I do want to say approval on number 14. Thank you to staff for working, continuing to work hard on this, especially for Jerry's work in doing this. And the next step for that item is that it's going to be on the city of Austin's agenda for December 12th, I believe. And so, hopefully everything goes smoothly with that and then we can actually start, you know, work on this important, important water line, so. Thank you. We approved on consent, item number eight, which is the minutes for the October 15th, 2024 meeting. Item number nine, approval of canceling the December 17th, 2024 regular city council meeting. And council, as the city administrator noted, we're going to have the December 3rd meeting and then we'll have a retreat on December 6th before going on a, a longer winter break. Item number 10, approval of appointment of Melissa Marquez as the city secretary under section 31.55 of the city code of ordinances. Item number 11, appointment, approval of the appointment of Brand Boozer, Stephen Duppy, Russell Harding, Miguel Huerta, and Lisa Versace as a, as regular members of the zoning commission for a two-year term. Item number 12, the appointment of Scott Crowe, Melissa Gonzalez, Ratha Grimes, and Animal Food Center for a hotel occupancy tax fund grant in the amount not to exceed $32,500. And item number 14, as we just mentioned, approval of the negotiation and execution of an interlocal agreement between the city of Sunset Valley and the city of Austin to facilitate the construction of a water line within the city of Austin right away to serve the properties located at.
In several council meetings and as we've discussed, changes to the organizational chart and to amending, amending job descriptions. And so, I've been researching really this topic for, for at least a good year now. Searching really this topic for, for at least a good year now. And there's really two issue, and there's really two issues at, at hand. One issue is we do not have a full-time, you know, dedicated, the things we did when we upgraded our financial software system to the Tyler Technologies ERP is we included, which we never had before, a personnel software system. So, now all of the employees are in this personnel system, which in the Tyler system, we now do payroll in-house, tracking, you know, leave and vacation and sick hours, all within the city's financial software. In doing some research about what could we do to sort of fill the gap with, with human resources needs, there, there's a lot of companies out there, you may have heard of ADP, another one that I was looking at was called Insperity. This is, these are professional employer organizations called PEOs. And in talking with them, I spoke with Insperity and I believe Kyle and I also, a while ago, spoke with ADP. These are generally, you know, one-stop shops. When you contract or, you know, when you contract with them, they want, they want you to do everything with them, including the payroll, including the, you know, benefits management. And we just spent all of this time and money bringing on Tyler ERP to handle our financial-related, you know, HR activities like payroll. So, the other aspect of this, of this process is the HR policy manual. So, the current HR policy manual was adopted by council back in July of 2010. And we've made several amendments, additions, and most recently, some removals, you know, just as things, as things come up, such as there were some, we had to put some amendments in there related to COVID. And now we've actually removed some of those. And so, any of those come to council because city council has to approve any sort of change to the HR policy manual. But, in just speaking with some key staff and department heads, we really feel it's time for a major update and modernization of the HR policy manual. You know, I would recommend we don't, it's not throwing out the HR policy manual and creating a whole new one. It's using the one we have, making sure it's compliant with all state and federal laws. And a key part of this too is I think what is missing, I've, I've done a little research and spoken with some HR professionals, and what is needed are administrative bulletins and/or SOPs, standard operating procedures, to back up the HR policy manual to where there is, you know, room for interpretation or where it's not clear, you know, there may just be one paragraph in the HR policy manual, you know. A bulletin or SOP may need to be created to back up that, to, to back up that policy and to help department heads and supervisors implement the, the policies effectively. So, that is really why I've come up with this RFQ. It's very much in a draft form. As was mentioned, there isn't a budget, budgeted line item for this. So, if this was something the city wanted to pursue this year and get started, we would have to do a budget amendment. So, you know, there, we, we could wait. If this is something council wants to pursue, we could wait and time the RFQ where we would be negotiating a contract during the budget season, preparing for FY26 and maybe have a contract ready to go October 1st. However, as I wrote in the, in the cover page, I think we should act sooner than later because I think we need to get started with updating the HR and modernizing the HR policy manual. And the, the idea being is that whatever consultant or firm is selected to do that work on updating the HR policy manual, they're going to get to know the city as they're working through that process. And then we can sort of keep them on retainer for, for any, any further HR needs we have. So, in the scope of services, these include organizational analysis, you know, assisting with development and optimization of the organizational structure and refining job descriptions, recruitment and retention, providing guidance on recruitment, best practices, hiring procedures, training and development, you know, creating and helping with training programs focused on compliance, leadership, and workforce development. And then any other additional human resources consulting services, such as if we need some sort of guidance on any sort of disciplinary procedures, this consultant could be, you know, we could work with this consultant to, to provide that guidance. So, again, the contract is going to be heavy upfront because there's going to be a lot of work in updating the policy manual and creating those administrative bulletins and SOPs. And then the work, to me, teeters off because we've got all of this structure now in place and we only need to rely on the consultant on an as-needed basis, sort of keep them on retainer. So, that, that is, that is the idea. So, I'd be happy to have any feedback and any questions or comments you may have on, on the proposal.
All right, council, questions for staff? Councilor Rosengard?
On 2.1.3 organizational analysis, assist with the development and optimization of the city's organizational structure, including updates to the organizational chart, refining job descriptions, and enhancing overall efficiency and operational alignment. Anytime you add certain things for them to do, they're looking at that and thinking it's going to be a regular basis. It's going to be frequent and so thus my fees are going up. What you need to do when you have something that is so vague is say, how often does something like this happen? Is it quarterly, monthly, yearly, what?
And that's a really good point. This would be totally at the discretion, really, this is more of the council, mayor, and city administrator would provide, you know, if, if a need arises, hey, you know, there's some sort of program or there's some sort of service that we need to, you know, fill for the residents or that the city needs more expertise in, we could look to this person and say, hey, can you help us maybe analyze some job descriptions? Maybe there's someone already on staff that we could, you know, shift duties around or, you know, no, maybe we need to create a new position. So, this, this is a task that I, I do not see as ongoing. This is more of an as-needed, as-needed service. If council, the mayor, the city administrator need help with, you know, refining the organizational structure, yeah.
It doesn't say as needed.
Right, right.
Even if you say as needed, how often is it needed? So, all I'm saying is every time you ask them to do something, they're thinking, how many hours? How much am I going to get paid per hour? And then the RFQ, which is only on qualifications, when we get to RFP, price goes up. So, you want to minimize as much that goes out that we can handle inside. For instance, organizational chart, well, we can handle that. Job descriptions, the best person, when I was in corporate America, the best person who knew the job and corporate America would ask you, the person doing the job, to write out the job description because they would always say, you know exactly what you're responsible for. Now, write it out to make sure that we don't miss anything that you do on a daily basis. So, same thing. All they're doing is perfecting it, the language in it, that's all. But we could do a lot of that in-house, as we have done.
And I see that. I see still the, you know, just as we do now, we, you know, I use the, either the existing job description as the baseline, you know, maybe do a little research, talking with the department heads, what makes sense. And then, you know, then it's brought to council. This would just be almost like one more step, you know, before it gets to council saying, hey, we had our HR consultant vet this. Everything is in here, you know, that, that should be in here and it meets, it meets all of the, you know, the standards, so.
Thank you.
Councilor Brown?
Thank you. I, it makes sense to me to, to have the, sort of be ready to run in, timing-wise, in fiscal year '25, '26, so that October 1st, early, at the beginning of the year, that we have the HR capability in place, ready to go. In order for that to happen, the, the policy manual, which, the revisions of which should precede, precede the, that activity would need to be done in this fiscal year. So, it just makes sense to me that we would do the, the policy manual revisions, go ahead and work the process so that we could get the policy manual division, revisions done this year and then start the, the process, the, the regular HR activities next year.
Thank you. Mayor Broten?
So, two things. One, for better or worse, the real purpose of HR in most, most organizations is to shield the organization from liability. Two, you can use consultants in one of two ways. One, one extreme is you completely outsource something to them and they take it over. The other extreme is you use them to set up things so that you can take, take them over and do them yourself. And I'm much more in favor of that second approach where, for example, you bring a consultant in to help you lay out what should be in the policy manual, to help you lay out your SOPs, to help you train staff and maybe mayor and council as well. And then you can basically take that function over in-house. And maybe once in a while, you, I wonder if it's possible to have not like a five-year contract as this document suggests, but just something where you can occasionally go, go out to a company and say, we need your help with this particular item. As opposed to a long-term contract with a consultant because we've talked about this before with contractors, contractors are out to make money. That's perfectly fine, but they're always going to try to expand the scope of their activities in your organization. And I think we want to avoid that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Okay. Yeah, and the, the term, this is, a, a lot of this language I've pulled just from other RFQs that we've, we've entered. So, the term that's very much, you know, can be, can be discussed. And, and one thing, you know, again, the idea was to have, to have an RFQ because, and I've discussed this with the city attorney, this is a professional service. Another, you know, another possibility is if we really want to make this about the HR policy manual and the, the HR policy manual update and the creation of the, you know, the, the admin, the administrative bulletins and SOPs, you know, could that be an RFP versus an RFQ? And I still think you're in the realm of this is a professional service, so I think it still has to be an RFQ, but I can talk more, discuss more with, you know, the city attorney because I know council, council prefers an RFP because all the proposals then have a, have a price attached to them versus an RFQ where you go strictly based on qualifications, then you enter into contract negotiations. However, you do not have to, once you start negotiating, if the city's not happy with the price, you can, you know, not select them and then go to the next most qualified for.
Councilor Johnson?
I just have two questions. So, you talked about ADP and Chinette, Gusto, stuff like that. That's probably not the approach you want. You want somebody that.
Yeah, again, they're going to be very much cookie cutter. They're going to want you to have their, you know, this is the way we do HR. I don't think we want to do that. I think we're looking, I mean, in my mind, it's a very small firm, like one, you know, one person that's had expertise in, in working on, working on, on, you know, working with cities, specifically maybe even small municipalities.
So, do you know if that exists?
Uh, yes.
Whenever we get into HR stuff, I just kind of like sit back and let you guys cook because I don't, it's not my, my world. But, so, you know, I think about when Leo came in, like helping out with the AV stuff. I mean, that's a much smaller thing, but it was really nice that it was almost less formal because he brings in a lot of knowledge and we were able to just, you know, kind of act on it pretty quickly. And, you know, it's more just like, I get that maybe you want like a firm of one to a couple of people that do this. What we ended up doing with, the second thing is, what we ended up doing with, who is our IT provider?
Vista.
You know Vista. So, we ended up sharing that with like Liberty Hill, like kind of a, how's it working?
Yes, so they, there's, excuse me, the state allows something called like a piggyback contract. So, Liberty Hill, well, they, they were going to and then they ended, they ended up not doing that.
Okay.
It got approved by council and everything, but they ended up actually not piggybacking off our contract. But cities can, can do that if it follows the right, you know, legal procedures. You can piggyback off of another contract that has gone through the, you know, that has gone through the, the required, you know, RFP and procurement slash bidding process.
Right. I, I just think about like how much this person would potentially, I guess, your, your idea was get it done and then just say, thank you, we've got it from here and then maybe we'll revisit another time. And so, like IT is just like an ongoing thing.
It's an ongoing, right. And I really do, and maybe it is that. Maybe this is just, hey, let's get the, the HR policy manual updated. Let's get the bulletins and SOPs in place and then we, we've got it. And then we also always have, you know, if, if a situation arises, which it has, we have our city attorneys. We also have TML that we can go to as well. So, that, that's always, you know.
Can you?
It's not like we're, we're not blind. We have, we, we do have, have guidance, but.
And so, when you talk about SOPs and bulletins and just like the things that you know that we're kind of missing and the things that we do. we're kind of missing, and the things that we don't know that we're missing, which is like some of the bigger issues.
Yep.
Are there any examples that you can give me that are actually shareable? Like, it doesn't have to be a bad thing, a good thing.
Um...
Not right now.
Yeah. I have a lot, but I don't know.
You know, we talk about this, and I'm always, I don't even know, like what the, like what the missing part of our handbooks are, and...
There's just a lot that doesn't have anything to back it up, and so, it's open to interpretation, which can be really dangerous, especially if you're talking about things like benefits and compensation.
Okay.
Like, oh, well, you did it this way, why are you doing it? You know, you did it for them, why aren't you doing it? Yeah, it just could potentially open up cans of worms, so.
Okay.
Both internally and, you know, externally, so.
Thank you. Councilor Medicas.
So, I think I'd like to see this really focused on the updating of the manual, to make sure that we're in compliance with state and federal legislation, because that changes all the time. And perhaps, we need to have a city policy where we put into place, like we have contracts that need to be rebid every so often, that we have a review built in for, I don't know what would be appropriate, every five years, or three years, whatever, so that it's in the system that we know is coming up, and we need to update the policy manual. I think it's important to have the SOP, so not just have the policy that says, this is what is, but what's the procedure for making sure that we're following that policy and implementing it? And then, I'd like to see it include training for staff, and perhaps even a council session where we understand exactly what the procedures are, if this, then that, kind of thing, in a big picture view for council. But I think it's a great idea to get it updated. I think it would be better to find someone that we feel comfortable with, that has a certification to do this work, and do the work on updated manual, see how we like them before we decide whether or not we want to go in further, or have them as a consultant, or an agency that we use again if we have an issue. But I know there are people that do this for a living, and it's, you get certified in HR.
Yeah, I would echo what Councilor Medica says about the training. I think that that's an aspect that isn't, is, any kind of compliance with the HR manual is going to require ongoing training, onboarding, you know, and also just updates about, you know, federal regulations or state regulations, that staff needs to be aware of, maintain currents. And so, I can see this being also a useful aspect to having a consultant provide that training, you know, so that it's kept up with, right? I think that's something that I think is important. I think that staff, you know, I think their time and their focus doesn't need to be on that aspect, if it's something that we can, you know, take from a consultant like this or a third party, because that can take up a lot of time for HR, is just making sure that people are doing their regular training, doing their regular compliance, and so. And that also includes council, you know, we've, I think, sometimes not had as much training ourselves in terms of, you know, the awareness of the HR aspects to the city as well. Councilor Rosengard, and then, once questions are done, I will open up for comments from the public.
It's not like we haven't looked at our human resources policy manual again since 2010. We amended it in 11/15/2011. We deleted Section 9.11 in 2012. We amended Section 14 in 3/6/2012. We've removed Section 1411 in 2012. We amended Section 2 in 2013. We amended Section 14 in 2013. We added Section 9 in 2015. We amended Section 903 in 2020. We amended Section 2 and 18 in 2020. We added Sections 14.6 and 14.18 in 2021. We amended Section 1.06 in 2022. We amended Sections 3, 13, and 1308 in 2023. We amended Section 9.15, 14.10 in April 2nd, 2024, and we removed Section 14.6, 14.7 in April 2nd, 2024. So, we have looked at it on a regular basis, and amended, and added, and deleted as we went along. So, I just wanted everybody to understand, we didn't just create the human resource policy and then leave it on a shelf. We have been looking at it and reviewing. Thank you.
Councilor Medicas.
So, I was involved in some of those, and that's been kind of like a piecemeal thing. So, it's like, okay, we're going to do job description updates, we're going to add a position, we have to change the personnel manual, we're going to do the org chart, we did the org chart, we did how we do the evaluations, and redid the evaluation process. So, we've done pieces of it, you're absolutely right, but I think, you know, you can piecemeal something for so long before it gets fragmented. And so, I think it would be important to have someone to look at it that can just say, here's a nice, clean, not redo our current one, but take the work that we've done and clean it up, make sure we're compliant, and then, perhaps, once we have a draft of that, we have a small group of residents that are interested, perhaps to review that before it comes to council.
Do we know if our current HR manual is compliant with federal, state, and local laws?
That is, that is one of the questions, so we want to make sure that it is. I know there's a classification of employees. Right now, we have a classification called non-regular part-time, and as Kyle and I have researched, that really, that doesn't exist in any sort of federal and state.
I think if the answer to that question is not yes, then you need to bring expertise in to...
Exactly. That's exactly why. And we actually started an in-house, you know, we do have a staff member that is pretty knowledgeable, and so we kind of started some in-house, you know, revisions, and I think we started in Section 1. And there were so many questions, and we realized this was going to take forever if we did this in-house, and then, working with attorneys, which is, you know, billable hours, and then bringing it to, so, again, as Councilmember Medica said, it could, it would be really fragmented if we tried to do this piecemeal, and it would just take, it would be very, it would be a very burdensome, that was the first thing I thought, oh, let's, you know, let's do this in-house review, we'll use, you know, existing staff and our attorneys, and then bring it to council as we update, but it would just take too long and be too burdensome. So, I think that's why we need a full, an expert looking at the full, the full manual. The problem is, I just don't know how long that's going to, I don't know how long that's going to take, or how many hours that's going to take the consultant, so.
Other questions from council before I open up for public comments? All right, let's invite the public to address or discuss this issue.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Melissa Gonzalez, 26 Rees. I was involved with, extensively involved with the original creation of the document, and I will attest to its schizophrenic nature, because you had people who were in government, and you had people who were in the private sector. And there's sometimes a really strong thing, so when you see some of the craziness in our current manual, you will see that, because there was a Mary, and especially, you know, there are times that the city goes, private sector, private sector. And, you know, it's just different than government. And so, you'll see some of those traces in that document. So, it would be really nice to have someone who was knowledgeable in actual government to go and, you know, clean that up. And so, I will tell you that, as a person who was involved with that, I was also, as this Councilmember Medica said, involved in some of the updates to it, and certainly been here for all of the updates and been interested in. And it isn't a cohesive document, it is just the way we put it together. And this is not the only document that this is true of in our city, and it's not the only that's structural. So, it would be good to have a government person, which we said we were going to do back in 2010, evaluate structural things, too. And I think UT has a possibility of being able to do that. So, I would say, that's another thing that we should check at the same time. And I, this is fortuitous, because I've been thinking about this for the last month, that I meant to bring this up to somebody, so I'm glad that we're having that discussion. But this was not, when we, when we were looking at this at the AAA Committee, these were not the only things that we saw that were not necessarily in compliance. Susan Durso would be a good person to help me remember what all those other things we were going to double-check were, and I might have notes. But those are the things. So, I really, wholeheartedly think we do need to have someone of a government persuasion. And so, I think that the answer, which I haven't seen anybody say yet, is TML, and see if TML has someone who works with small cities who would do this, because no one said the words TML. And I like them because they're often free, and so, or lower cost. And so, I would want to check into that. There were people who were advocating that we just bought a TML version of this, and I didn't think that, given how peculiar our city is, I didn't think that was a good strategy. But, it may have a lot of SOPs that we could steal, that I think could be a good thing, and that would save us money. I agree with everything that everybody said in the discussion. I mean, wholeheartedly, that was a very good discussion. But I am concerned that we, I think that we should do this first, the part I particularly agreed with is, we do this first and see if we like the person who helped us do it. I think we should talk to TML and other small cities and see who they used, because they're going to have the same situation of, as we do, where we just have a part-time person. I mean, it was Sarah, it was Ray Jean, those were the kinds of people that have been our HR people in the past, and done a job. But I also want to make sure that if we're ever again in a position where people at the top are not following our manuals, that we have a built-in system to solve that, because I don't think we had those kinds of checks and balances in the past. So, I would, I would really want to make sure that those kinds of things are there, built into this manual. But anyway, thank you all so much for this really excellent discussion. Just please consider TML. Thank you.
Thank you. And, yeah, I don't know if we've had a chance to inquire with TML about what services they might be able to provide, or other recommendations, but I know that would be a very useful next step as well, as we go forward with consideration of the next RFQ or anything else.
Definitely will reach out to them.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for that suggestion, or reminder, since we, TML should always be present and is one of our first options for small cities. Other questions from council or any additional direction? Based on the discussion, we will be bringing this back as a potentially actionable agenda item, not necessarily as an RFQ, but with the next steps for the city, given that there's a general consensus that we need to revisit our HR manual, develop SOPs, and then, it's open for discussion, you know, in terms of like how much additional support we need. But I will work with the city administrator, make sure that we follow the different avenues before bringing back the next item, so it'll probably be something, and we could also potentially discuss it at the retreat if we have some updates at that time as well, without taking action, but just to make sure that we're getting additional feedback and updates from the city administrator on additional research, so. All right. One hour, council is there? Councilor Mademetica.
Oh, I just had a question.
Oh, sorry. I thought you were...
Yeah. You know, sometimes I wish, some people might want to just come to council and just kind of like quietly sit and observe and then move on, but I think we just had a mother and daughter, I was curious, I was happy they were here, and, I don't know, I guess I could have been the one to just ask and be like, hey, what do you want to know? You know, was there a topic that you came for? And, I don't know, but then they, I mean, it was a scintillating conversation about HR. Still, I was, I just remember when there was like a scout troop that came in, and we were...
Yeah, typically, we try to recognize when there is like a scout troop or another civic organization coming for, you know, that kind of educational purpose, and we get some forewarning about that, you know, or right before the meeting, but I always appreciate those opportunities when people do come to watch us conduct our business.
They heard about the food, and then...
All right. Now, most adjourned, is there a second for that?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, well, we are adjourned at 7:01 PM. Thank you, staff. Thank you, council. Yeah. I want to say I've seen it once, but...